I would like to begin this evening's meeting and welcome everyone, and if you would please join me in the pledge, we'll have a moment of silence before. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and those at home that might listen to this recording. We have our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the last meeting. We have a resolution approving an amendment for streetlight upgrades. At Lakeside, at Chapman Farms, we have a resolution approving the extension of management agreement between the city and the school district. And the last is approving an amendment to the contract for construction management services concerning the new safety building. I would entertain a motion. Has anyone first, does anyone have anything they want to pull? All right, very good. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item is a presentation for the Charter Commission Report. Just as an introduction, in 93, Blue Springs voted to create a Charter Review Commission that is mandated to review and recommend changes to the Home Rule City Charter every 10 years. There's nine members of that commission, including the chairman, Mr. Brian Pratt, and I assume, Mr. Pratt, you're going to do the presentation this evening.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's great to be here, great to be back before the city council, it's been a long time. Now, you should come here and give us the form resolutions, but now it's just with the Charter Review Commission.
Mr. Pratt, if I could ask you to use the microphone, please, so we make sure we get you on record.
Absolutely. Is the microphone working? You'll see, and first, I just want to make special mention and notice of the members of the Charter Review Commission. This commission was selected by Mayor Ross and all of you all, and I can tell you that you all have selected, with the exception of myself, of course, an amazing esteemed group of individuals to the city. And that was referenced by the fact that we had numerous meetings, most meetings went over an hour and a half, there was significant debate and discussion over all the issues. And I can tell you, as I look over this board, we had just absolute amazing attendance at the meetings, and I look at this board and I can see the incredible influence of each one of these commission members. And probably my vice chair, Mary Potter, who I know you all are familiar with, and Mary was on the very first Charter Review Commission. So she has served on them all and provided a lot of great institutional knowledge of what happened among the various charter reviews and why some things were considered and why some things were not considered. So I can't say enough for the members. I stand here before you today and to present our unanimous report to you all, but I stand on the shoulders of a pretty amazing group of men and women that spent a lot of many, many hours dedicated to this process. So, and thanks, and also, sitting through that were Christine Cates and Kathy Richardson spent a lot of time, so I'd be remiss without mentioning the long, long hours that they spent in. They went home most nights after these meetings, after 8:00 PM, and to their great work, I appreciate that for them. So let's go right through, and really, probably, I'm going to talk about the most significant changes and what you all should have already had before you are the redlined versions of the old charter versus some of the changes we've made. And so, some of the changes you'll see were typographical formatting changes, but I'm going to touch on some of the most significant changes. And the backdrop to these changes to the Charter Review Commission was accountability. And really, what we wanted to do as a commission was, how can we make sure that our governing document ensures greater accountability? And really, what you saw during the discussion, and what happened during a lot of discussion, was that a lot of the folks that came in to visit, to testify, to provide testimony, and a lot of the commission members felt that our current city government's doing a very good job. Our councilmen and women worked very hard and do a good job, but what we really wanted to do is to make it where we didn't think about our current representatives and our current mayor, who we all felt were doing an admirable job, what would we do, what could we do to build in greater accountability into the process, where if maybe times aren't as good as they are right now? And so that's really the driving force. So what we thought was, how can we make our city government more accountable? So first, you'll see, the mayor votes, and we thought this was a good effort toward accountability for two reasons. One, most people when the mayor is out campaigning for office, most folks think that the mayor can unilaterally come in and make dramatic changes when he or she is elected mayor. That's just not true. And that's just not how our charter was ever drafted. Our charter really invests much of our power into the city administrator, who runs the day-to-day functions of city government. And I think that's often lost on the public when they vote for the mayor, is they say, hey, we want to make some change, we want the mayor to influence the changes. And so what we wanted to do were two things, wanted to give the mayor some power to make a vote, we also thought it created greater accountability, because there leaves no dispute on where the mayor stands on an issue. So you'll see, the mayor has to take a position on every single issue that the city council takes up. And again, that provided a sense of greater accountability. And so those were the two re- driving forces on the mayor votes. And then in our surrounding cities, the mayor also votes in, about half the cities they vote in, probably the biggest example of the mayor voting was the city of Kansas City. So, the next is that we also wanted the accountability of the city council approving district boundaries. We wanted that drafted into the charter to make sure that there is a stamp of approval when the boundaries change, we want to make sure that our city elected officials have a say in that and make sure that it's a public vote on that. We also clarify the qualifications to serve in the city council. Right now, right now, as it serves, on our own charter says that a felon can serve, long as they're not currently serving a sentence. And so we fixed that. We also fixed it to make sure that a councilman can't be delinquent on their city, state, and federal taxes. One thing we wanted to clean up, though, to make sure, is that if a city councilman is a day late on their water bill, they don't forfeit their office. And that's never the intention. So we made sure we clarified that here, the specific qualification to serve. They can't be delinquent on any city, state, federal, income, property taxes, and they can't be a convicted felon, period. So, and that's drawn into the new charter, again, an effort toward accountability. We also, toward that, wanted the mayor or his or her designee to sign city contracts. And while I think that's often the practice, we wanted to make sure we put it right in our charter to make sure the mayor, or at his or her direction, can make sure that they can sign. If the mayor's gone, the mayor can delegate that duty to Madam Mayor Culpepper, or over to the city administrator, to Mr. Johnson, and that they can execute the documents. So we wanted that layer of accountability built into the charter. Also, we put in some budgeting accountability, to make sure that the balances in the budgets are reported, to make sure that you all are aware of what the balances is in all the accounts, and put that right into the charter. A lot of the thought is, the greater responsibility we put on the council to see and approve these things, we thought was going to help make our city government better. And again, it builds greater accountability with the public itself. Also, we posted notices. We gave the city council, in an effort to save some money, to the city to save some money, to not only put it in some newspapers, but to make a decision, do you want to put it in a newspaper, or do you want to post it on the website? We thought if you had it on a website, you had some greater accountability, can save the city a chance to make, to save a little bit of money. And we'll leave that discretion up to you. What we really felt as a commission was, not to make decisions for you. You all are the elected, you all are the elected members. We want the decisions to be made by you. We wanted to give you the options, though, so you don't have to put it in a newspaper. If you want to save money, you can put it on the website. But you'll see in the charter, though, we also required you to put the budget on the websites. And while I understand it's the current practice, we make that a requirement in the charter to make sure that the budget is posted on the website, so anybody that has a computer and internet feed can go right in to see what the city budget is. Again, greater accountability and transparency. Last, we allow city employees to participate in the political process in their spare time only. Never can a city employee do, participate in the process while they're on city time. No one could advocate that, but we do allow, if you are a city employee right now, you may, if you so choose, put a yard sign on your yard. You may, if you so choose, contribute to a campaign. And so, again, that's some consensus, we want to allow city employees the ability to do that rather than handcuff them. So, again, what you saw is our efforts to help make our charter more responsive and have greater accountability. I don't see these, and no one on the commission saw these as dramatic changes. We felt that this is where things were trending. And I will tell you that the vote on these things, as we went through the votes on different provisions, sometimes it was unanimous, sometimes it wasn't. Sometimes we had a lot of disagreement on whether to address an issue, whether or not to address an issue. But I can tell you this, at the end, the final vote to approve or not approve of this was a unanimous vote of the entire commission. Here are some things that I want to address, we did not address, that may be left up for future commissions to address, that we chose, we didn't feel like addressing, of a full-time mayor and the way our city government is structured, as you know right now, as most people are well aware, the city administrator has that power, whether or not you want to move that in the future to a full-time mayor. We did not do that. A larger city council with different terms, changing the terms, thought of, considered, but we left it the same. Term limits, again, you see that the discussion that comes up in really any government body, discussed and not addressed in this. And right now, as you all know, we're a nonpartisan council, outside of, I think, Councilman Leesay and the mayor, I don't think we know of anybody's political leanings unless they've publicly declared them, but I know, Chris, you've been a candidate on the Republican side, and Mayor Ross has been a Republican candidate, so, but we decided not to do that. So these, we left these issues, I just want to tell you that some issues were addressed and said, hey, we're not going to address these issues. You may see these issues on later commissions, but they're not in this. We generally feel with a 9-0 vote, that, or with a unanimous vote on this, that we felt we took out and didn't address a lot of the controversial things. I want to thank you for your service. I know, I appreciate your service, and I want to thank you all and on behalf of the commission for an opportunity to serve you and the public at large. So I would recommend that the council pass this and adopt it and send it to, send it to Blue Springs voters. In that regard, I will make myself available, along with several members of the commission, said that we would go around and visit with different groups and talk to them about the changes, and talk to them about why we think this is a good idea, and that's been historically done as we've passed and adopted different charters. So I'll answer any questions, but at this point, I would urge you to adopt it and send it to the Blue Springs voters, and I appreciate the opportunity today.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Does anyone have any questions or items they'd like to bring up or discuss? Councilman Carter.
Brian, thank you and the commission members for serving. I know this was tedious work. As I looked at this overview, I think the thing that troubled me was a lack of separation of power. We're basically blending the executive into the legislative. I mean, it says right here, the mayor would become a member of the city council with all powers, rights, privileges, duties, responsibilities of the city council, including the right to vote on questions. We talked initially about the mayor being able to vote in questions, but I don't think any of us envisioned, I'll speak for myself here, I didn't envision the mayor becoming a member of the city council. It's almost as if he's an at-large member of the council now.
It's a great point, and something we really considered in concert with whether or not you should have a full-time mayor, because really, right now, there's no, the executive officer of the city of Blue Springs right now isn't the mayor, really the city administrator, who has the final authority and to say on that, subject to the power of removal by the full city council. So we felt without a true executive that was running things, and if you think about that, you think about the county executive, you think about the governor, and you think about the president, those folks run, do essentially what our city administrator does in the city of Blue Springs, they run, they run the city. At some point in the future, as our city continues to grow, I think I'd be a strong supporter of having a full-time mayor and a true executive, and when that happens, I think they should be removed from the city council, and then you would have a true separation of powers. But as it stands right now, and really what we thought as a council, the mayor frankly has no executive powers. As such, we can make them, I think you said it best, and your words are probably say it best, and almost an at-large member of the council. And so that was considered, and that was the reasoning behind it. I'm certainly open to anybody to disagree on it, and I certainly understand what you say, but we thought the best way to incorporate that was what we put in the charter.
Any other, Mr. Levcey?
I have a couple of questions, similar to what Dale was discussing. When you look at the way it's set up now, the mayor becomes a member of the council as far as the vote, but also retains the right to veto a bill, what was kind of the logic in the discussion, allowing to do both? Because it kind of seems like if he's going to vote, he's already taken a position, running back to the veto after the fact seems to be redundant.
Yeah, and you make a good point, and what we decided was that the mayor, you know, he's the executive, he's the only one on the council, voted in by everybody in the city, and so they ought, the mayor ought to be held to some higher level, so we gave the mayor the ability to vote. And just to be clear, though, to override the mayor's veto, the mayor does not participate in that vote. So in any circumstance, the mayor never participates in the override vote. So we wanted to sit, we wanted to give the mayor some greater level of responsibility and authority. The mayor currently has the ability to veto that, and we didn't take that away with this charter.
Okay. And one other thing, I think there was some discussion about, right now, the mayor essentially, I think, by tradition more than anything, sort of is the one responsible for setting the agenda and for the items on the agenda. I think there was some discussion about whether there should be explicitly in the charter a mechanism by which a certain number of the city councilmen could essentially place an item on the agenda if it was of interest to them and not necessarily of interest to the mayor. Was there any discussion about that?
There was, there was. There was a lot of discussion about that, and whether or not we should say, whether or not, and to what extent, the Charter Commission should set the rules on how you do your business. And we really defaulted to the fact that I think we all thought it was probably a pretty good idea for a certain number of council members to be able to place an agenda item on the agenda, and we all thought that made a lot of sense, and we all thought it was a pretty good idea. But we defaulted to the fact that we're not, if we step our toe into starting to dictate what your rules ought to be, and we start down that path, it becomes a dangerous path for the commission to go down. So, and frankly, I was the one that said, I think we should take a step back and let the city council regulate how they do their own rules. And I was really sort of taken aback by, that's how we do it in the House, in the Missouri House, and we set our own rules, and in that, in those rules, we have, we have rules on how to take, put something on the agenda. And so we made that sort of, I would prefer that to be a rule-making function, to let you guys decide that, rather than to have that place in the charter. So while I think we all thought it was a pretty good idea, we really hesitated, and really, at my lead, to say, let's not dip into making decisions for you guys, let's let you guys and gals make your own decisions. And so that's really what it came down to, although I think it'd be a great idea.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else?
I've got a couple.
Councilman Quibow.
Item 10 here, where it talks about unanimous votes for bills to be read two times. I know in my time on the council, one of the things that we worked really hard to do is make our city an inviting place to do business. And oftentimes, we don't have unanimous votes on relatively mundane things. I'm wondering what the commission's thoughts were on that, in the fact that this will cause a lot of, potentially cause a lot of development-related activities to take twice as long to get approved. And I would say, based on my own experience on the council, we've identified controversial things over the years, that we really felt needed to have the first and second reading split across meetings, and we're just, I'm just kind of wondering, is there a perceived problem on the commission that we're trying to fix here?
No, there wasn't. And like I said, we really took a step back from the current council. It's not to fix a problem that anybody thought existed. What they're driving force behind that provision was, is to ensure and make sure that later city councils, that may not be as efficient and work together as this council does, couldn't be able to rush things through and do things in the middle of the night when no one's paying attention. We really wanted to deliberately, and unfortunately for the council sometimes, slow that process down, unless it is a truly consentable item. And we felt that even if one council member said, hey, listen, I'm not a fan of this, and I don't think it's a good idea, I think we should slow this down, that they ought to do that. And we think, we felt that slowing the process down ensured that everybody in the public gets a chance to come in and weigh in, rather than to have something go through. And to be clear with you, there was never any thought that this had happened, and we're trying to fix a wrong and right a wrong, and, but I'll tell you, there were a lot of issues where people came in and wanted to talk about fixing wrongs, and fixing things they perceived were wrongs, and we really, and you can see this reflected anywhere, I really resisted anything to say, hey, I'm not going to draw something here because someone felt they were wronged on something in the past. We're really trying to figure out what's the right process to happen, and then let you guys make the decisions. And a lot of people came to us and said, hey, we don't like a decision that you guys made on an issue, and that's, I'm not trying to solve those problems. That's not, that's not, that's your, that's in your purview. You are the elected officials, you are the representative of the city, I want you making those decisions, not me. I'm not elected to do that, and neither was this commission.
And the other thing that I wanted to ask about was, how would you characterize the discussions about the potential ethics problems that the change to allowing non-elected employees to make contributions? I understand from some outside discussion that part of that came down to the fact that we all have a First Amendment right, which I strongly support, I might add, to voice our opinions on things, but I know that just over the years, listening to the news about various councils around the nation that have had problems with mayors, maybe who are in the background twisting the arms of employees who make contributions to their campaigns and things like that, that I think the original wording pretty much eliminated that possibility, or at least made it illegal to do that, and in this case, it seems like it kind of opens the door maybe for that kind of activity.
Yeah, and there was a whole bunch of discussion on this, and so, and I think it's the right thing for this, is that you have most of the city of Blue Springs employees, in fact, I think every city employee is a merit employee. They're not a political, they're not a political employee. For example, when I was the Speaker of Pro Tem, I had a staff full of people, they're all political appointees. They're gone. When I'm gone, they're gone. And so with the city, you don't have that, and they're all merit employees. So we felt that a merit employee could be fired if they put a yard sign up on their yard for, against really any city issue, whether, you know, and maybe it could be construed to broader, as I say, even a parks tax, for or against a parks tax, they could be fired for doing that. And I'm not aware of any other level of, and I think there's a few cities that do that, but I'm not aware of any counties or states, and the federal government certainly doesn't allow that. And so what I thought, and what we thought is, is that we thought it wouldn't be a problem if somebody exercised their First Amendment, we're not sure it was even constitutional, even in our charter, I'm not convinced it's constitutional in our charter to prohibit anybody from exercising their First Amendment rights, you know, or to sit back and say, if my wife was a city employee, that I couldn't put a sign in the yard, you know, that would seem to be a little bit silly. So we thought, let's just avoid that, let's just avoid the process. Recognizing, though, and I've read, I've read some of the same stuff, I hear what you mean, I think there's some risk. I think there's certainly some risk to it. Anytime you have a process where you have campaign contributions, and you have people helping out campaigns, there's a risk to do it. But in this one, we decided to go along the risk of making sure people could exercise their rights than any other problems. And we felt with the city full of just simply merit employees, that if someone came in and became a new mayor, or somebody came in as a new city council member, I didn't feel there's a lot of ability that they could go in and start firing employees because they did anything. And that's, I think that's good and built into this process, too. So, but I hear what you're saying, and to sit back and say there's no risk to it is wrong, and so, but I think I wanted to side on the fact that, let's let city employees do this, and it's consistent, it used to be in the, under state law, Kansas City police officers were prohibited from doing this activity, the only group in the state prohibited from doing this. And so I sponsored a bill to get rid of it. Died, but just in the last couple of years, it was passed, and now Kansas City police officers can put a sign in their yard. So I just, I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Can I go back? I have just one question that Jeff raised on procedure. So just as a practical matter, if we have a piece of legislation and it is not unanimous in the first reading, by this, it would automatically go to the next meeting for a second reading?
Yeah, you can't hear, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if somebody is absent, does that make it unanimous?
I don't think it's addressed in here, I think if, I think if, how do you do it now? I think if it's unanimous, if someone's absent, it's still unanimous if they're not here. It doesn't say that every single person has to vote on it.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, again.
Thank you all very much.
And we do appreciate all of your time and the commission's time. We will go ahead and the mayor will review this, and we'll have discussion, and then at the next meeting on the 18th, we'll address a resolution. Thank you. All right, the next item is a public hearing, the CDBG Annual Action Plan for the fiscal year 2014. I will open the public hearing. We have exhibits?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one exhibit, which includes a city council information form from Scott Allen, Director of Community Development, CDBG 2014-15 Annual Action Plan, an affidavit publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, August 2, 2014, and these are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Again, before you this evening is our final step before we move forward with submitting the annual action plan for the CDBG funds to HUD. The deadline is August 15th, so this is the next closest city council meeting at which this could be brought up, and I will put the council form here on the screen. Just wanted to kind of tell you where we've been the last 30-plus days. End of June, the city published the 30-day notice where the draft annual action plan was presented. There were no specific comments from the public during the last 30 days. There was some discussion among staff as to how to move forward with certain of the proposed activities or services within the annual action plan, which is why you see it laid out the way it is here this evening. Do want to kind of then back up, we have just over $228,000 with which to allocate to different projects, programs, services. And starting at the top, the most expensive to the least in terms of funding allocations, Baumgartner tennis courts, new Parks Department project, minor home repair, actually increasing that a little bit slightly, from approximately 11 projects this current year to 12. First-time home buyers program, still holding steady at about 13 applications. The downtown facade grant program, this year it is $10,000, and we're looking to recommend the same for next year. And then Downtown Alive, which also, this will be its 30-year receiving funds, this year at the $10,000 level, and then the administration funds, just about 2% of the total. So you may see, by its omission, two new public services that were presented and discussed in previous city council meetings, public meetings for the CDBG Annual Action Plan, and that being for Community Services League and Hope House. We are looking to allocate $12,000 each, or $24,000 total, which again would bring the total of, quote, "public services" to the maximum allowed of 15% annually. But because they, those two in particular, those two public services are so, I guess, divergent from the current adopted consolidated plan goals, which really focus on downtown primarily, as well as park improvements, which is why you've been seeing again for the last several years, parks projects, downtown infrastructure projects, and then also focusing on housing, which is why you're seeing the first-time home buyers, minor repair program. It was just staff's opinion that it would be best to delay moving forward with the annual action plan with those two services included, and then come back after HUD's adoption, again after October 1, which is their deadline to adopt, accept that is, this annual action plan, and then look at a more comprehensive amendment to the consolidated plan, and then consequently, the annual action plan. consequently, the annual action plan. So, not to make kind of a two-step process, but it's going to be a two-step process where you're looking at the projects listed here. You can see $104,000 allocated to Baumgartner Park Tennis Courts, talking with Dennis Stovall, our Parks Director, he seems confident that $24,000 could come back out of that project with no detriment to the tennis court project. And then, again, split the $24,000 to $12,000 each to Hope House and Community Services League. So, it's kind of a procedural, kind of a hurdle that we're looking at leaping over here in the next couple of months. And again, since October 1 would be the very earliest that this would be approved by HUD, and the way they release funds is quite also time-consuming. For example, the minor home repair funds for this current year are just now getting released, was May into June before that happened. So, we don't anticipate really any significant delay in allocating funds and therefore turning over funds to a Community Services League or Hope House, since, again, we would have to go through a contract process and such before the council as well. So, I'll pause there and see if there are any questions and kind of how that procedure will work. But the intent is still there to move forward with an amendment kind of after the fact, and again, better align the consolidated plan goals with these public service groups, so it can be better, I guess, better presented to HUD, that we're utilizing the funds in a consistent manner through our consolidated plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Allen. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Allen? All right, very good. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item in favor?
Where's I?
Go ahead and take the mic, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, you need to be sworn in.
Do you have something to add to what you're about to give in this case? Would be the truth, up again.
I do.
Need your name and address?
Melody Christman. And my address, is that what you said? 2224 Northwest 12th Street, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64015. First of all, of course, I'm in favor of these amendments for the CDBG funds. I do want to point out, and I just want to put it out there, Community Services League is in Blue Springs. We're here, we directly affect our residents. I know Hope House does a lot of great work, they're a wonderful organization, but they are located in Independence. A lot of our residents depend on Community Services League in order to survive each week, each day, each month. And that is our goal. And that's all I really wanted to say about it, is that I really look for the consideration of the council and the CDBG. We need the funds desperately, in order to keep everything going the way we need to, to get this city, the people that need us the most, in the place that they need to be. So, I thank you for your time.
Say, anyone have any questions for Ms. Christman? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this, either in favor or opposition to? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Coubal.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Anderson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Carrie, you're in.
All right. Next thing I believe is the mayoral announcements. The only thing I'm showing is, there's a budget work session the 14th at 6:00 here at this facility. And then I know our mayor always talks about thoughts to ponder. I don't have any great words of wisdom, but as I was thinking about it earlier, my mother always told me, can't never try, so that's it tonight. Last item on the agenda are visitors, and I believe we have Ms. Miller from Downtown Alive.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and city council. Thanks for letting me talk tonight for just a few minutes. I'm sure you've probably all heard that Downtown Alive fostered this program with the CDBG funds, and you all were kind enough to approve that for us. And so, we went to Missouri Main Street Conference last Thursday night at the Evening of Excellence Awards Dinner, and we received this award. It is Outstanding Public Partner Award. It was awarded to America's Community Bank and the City of Blue Springs for this joint project that we got completed this past year for the bank building renovation. So, I think there were 40 nominations statewide, 12 different categories, and so, it's quite an honor for Downtown Alive to have received this award. It gives us some very valid state recognition for some work that we've really, everyone has worked hard to get completed. And I think it will keep our project and our group really moving forward in a positive direction. So, I just wanted to make sure to thank you very much for your support and for all that you've done for our group.
Thank you very much. That plaque, I believe, will be in City Hall for all to admire and appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there is no other business to be brought before the council, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
That was a motion to adjourn, I assume. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.